Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Purney?
Here.
Commissioner Vanir?
Here.
I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the pleasure of leaving some moment of silence. Our first item on today's agenda is the citizens forum. Time to tell aside for any citizen who would like to speak to the commission on an item not on the official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, we will move on to awards and proclamations.
Good afternoon. The AMEX proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is vital public service, and whereas members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services systems consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Americans benefit from the knowledge and skills of those highly trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. We'll be having a static display Saturday, the 26th, at the Central Mall, and the public's welcome to come in at any time to get blood pressures at any of the four stations. Thank you.
Super. I have a signed copy of your proclamation here.
Item 4.2, Presentation of Plaque of Appreciation to outgoing youth board members.
This first plaque is for Ah Young Jeum. If you could come forward. This is a plaque in appreciation for service rendered to the city of Salina, Kansas, on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as the youth representative from June 2006 through June 2007. So before I give this, I'll give you a chance to say anything you'd like to say. I understand you're a new proud graduate of Salina Central.
I'd just like to thank anyone and everyone who is involved in choosing me for this position, and I've learned so much, and I would just like to say thank you.
And we have one for Brett Holderman. This is a plaque in appreciation for service rendered to the city of Salina, Kansas, on the Arts and Humanities Commission as the youth representative from June of 2006 through May of 2007, presented to Brett Holderman. So likewise, I'd like to give you an opportunity to make any parting comments you'd like to make.
Well, I'd like to thank junior leadership of Salina for, they first informed me about the position, and they were very instrumental in getting me appointed to that. And I'd also like to thank the Salina Arts and Humanities Council for allowing me to be on there and being youth liaison. I really learned a lot, and it was a great experience. Thank you very much.
We will next move on to public items and items scheduled for certain time. There are none today, so that will bring us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 7th, 2007. Item 6.2, authorized purchase of a police car from Long MacArthur in the amount of $25,569.50.
I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. There is no development business today, so we will continue with items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 07-10387, providing a change in zoning district classification from R2 to PC1 on property addressed at 710, 714 through 716 and 718 East Iron Avenue.
We've had no additional comments in the subsequent week since first reading, and I would entertain a motion on second reading.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 07-10387 on second reading.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10387, providing for a change in zoning classification on property at 710, 714, 716, and 718 East Iron Avenue. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 07-10388, amending Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8-163 of the Salina Code pertaining to the building advisory board membership.
We likewise have had no additional comments. I'd invite any of those, if there are anybody in the public, if there is anybody in the public who'd like to speak to this. Seeing none, we'll bring it to the commission for action. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 07-10388 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10388, amending the Salina Code pertaining to the building advisory board membership. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 07-10389, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 3 of the Salina Code by adding Section 8-78.5, amending Section 408.2 of the Uniform Plumbing Code pertaining to the requirements of finished installation of certain plumbing fixtures.
Likewise, no comments have been received since first reading on May 7th, so I'd entertain a motion on second reading.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 07-10389 on second reading.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10389, amending the local Uniform Plumbing Code requirements pertaining to the finished installation of certain plumbing fixtures. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.4, first reading ordinance number 06-10322, amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 3, Section 8-73 of the Salina Code, amending Section 102.1 of the Uniform Plumbing Code to provide a method for contractors to self-certify certain sewer installations.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. This item is a bit of housekeeping. I'll explain a little bit more about what this pertains to in a few moments. By way of background, we, when Chapter 8 was rewritten in its entirety a couple of years ago, this particular section got dropped out of the plumbing code adoption inadvertently. We recognized the fact last year, and because it had something to do with contractor licensing, we brought this ordinance originally back to the city commission a little bit more than a year ago in conjunction with the original proposal for contractor licensing. When contractor licensing was sent back to the building advisory board by the commission at that time, they did not take action on this separate ordinance that was somewhat associated with it, and so it's kind of been languishing until the city clerk brought it to my attention last week that we had failed to take action on this particular item. What this deals with is the provision that allows certain licensed contractors, utility contractors, or plumbing contractors to self-certify residential sewer installations if they're doing a replacement or repair, or installing a new residential sewer. They are allowed to self-certify that without an inspection by the city. There's a special form that they have to fill out which indicates all of the various conditions that apply to the installation of that sewer, and as part of that program, we do a quality control inspection. We randomly select certain jobs that have been performed under that self-certification to go back and televise, TV those sewers to make sure that they were inspected properly, and the program's working quite well. We've identified a couple of sewers that needed some repair that were originally installed under this, and it's a very small, manageable number, so we feel like the program is working very well, and so it's our recommendation that the commission simply add the requirement back into the plumbing code that they previously acted on four years ago. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this.
Questions of Mr. Roberts? Thank you very much. I would entertain any public comment on the proposed ordinance. There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I would approve we adopt ordinance number 06-10322.
Second.
The motion is to adopt ordinance 06-10322. Question, any reason that isn't 07? It is held over. Because we had... It's 06 because it's been pending this long. Dealt with it before. Right.
I assume the number was assigned in 06, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Amending Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 3, Section 8-73 of the Salina Code, amending Section 102.1 of the Uniform Plumbing Code to provide for a method for contractors to self-certify certain sewer installations. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, resolution number 07-6392, establishing a policy for award of agency contracts.
Mr. Franz?
Mayor, commissioners, thank you. For a considerable period of time, City of Salina has provided funding to a variety of private, not-for-profit type of organizations and groups, provide certain services that generate a public benefit. In recent years, we've experienced some increasing levels of requests due in part to the passage of special sales tax, provided there's a part of the sheet, the current agency contracts, along with their current budgeted levels for you to review. Typically, economic development supplements such as payments to the Chamber of Commerce and Industrial Development and Convention and Tourism, payments to Salina downtown, and individually approved economic development supplements have not been considered within the realm of agency contracts and are typically provided with their own sets of criteria. One of our directions for a period of time has been to develop some sort of agency support policy or criteria that can be used for evaluating these requests on a consistent basis. We've attempted to do that with this action today. The specific policies that are recommended and proposed are attached. Either myself or Mr. Gage would be perfectly willing to try to answer any questions you might have. This is an outgrowth of several study sessions with the city commission over a period of probably about two years.
Yeah, commissioners, one of our objectives with this is, there was quite a bit of time spent on consideration of agency contracts last year, particularly towards the end of the budget process. Our thought being that if we're kind of throwing these out, the criteria out based on the input we receive, particularly at the last study session when we addressed this, and the thought being is that if you have some form of a policy guideline at least, it'll help you going into this year's review of those, and that's basically what we want to start with. And we recognize you may still want to modify this either a little or even significantly, and that's fine. We can take whatever input you have and then put that into the final version for you if we need to do that.
Any questions of Mr. Franz?
Do these organizations reapply or re, do they ask every year for these funds? Is it an ongoing thing, or do they have to requalify?
It's a continuing thing. Most of those organizations have submitted applications every year. Long-term history, back five or six years ago, it used to be that it would be every two years or every three years, and it, certainly with the establishment of the special sales tax, we've kind of upped that a little bit to an every-year kind of thing. The other thing that's happened is, for example, the transportation supplements have grown quite substantially, and we're talking about some pretty significant money now, so we've now said we're going to ask for a routine process every year where they ask for renewal, if they desire to be renewed.
Who sets these amounts? Is this something that was...
It's set by the city commission. The agencies appear, last year was at a couple of study sessions, and make their request, and then the commission would consider those and make the decision they...
Were they funded in full, what they were asking, or was there...
Not all the requests.
Not all of them, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Just curious about the minimum annual request of $10,000. What the thinking was there?
The commission at that time, I believe, thought that if we're going to do this, we ought to do something that is in a significant way. Now, they did at that time request that we grandfather, I believe, we have two requests that are, or two agencies that are still lower than that level, being Skyfire and Afika Snitter, if I recall correctly. They did request that those kind of be exempted from that requirement, but...
Just a notice, Mr. Franz mentioned that we are recommending the transportation be kind of held out separately from this and looked at on its own merits for a couple of reasons. One, it's such a very core-type service, and secondly, just because of demand, and possibly in the upcoming year, change in the whole way we provide that service or we facilitate that through other providers could prompt you to look at that a whole lot differently, so we felt it really should be set aside. The other thing is, there's a maximum of $120,000, and this is certainly just a recommendation based on input of setting an amount, and what we did is, we looked at what was funded outside of transportation last year and kind of presumed growth that was reasonable for the 2008, and that's where that number came from. The other thing that we thought was interesting, just as a sidebar, is we did mention here the municipal ban, and the interesting thing about that is, is we set it to aside as well because it was actually approved by a vote of the electorate on April 2nd, 1918, and so it has a neat little history to it, but certainly it didn't quite fit in with the rest of the requests by virtue of how it was authorized.
Additional questions? Thank you very much. I'm going to start by making a comment here. I am in disagreement with number four under the programming review criteria. There was actually quite a fierce argument at the time over how to word, how to do the wording on the ballot of the sales tax initiative, and the phrase human services made it on, made it into that, and at the time, the understanding was that the focus was going to be on capital projects because we did not want to be funding operating expenses and then get to the end of the sales tax and have people scream that we were cutting off their funding. So I would not be able to support this talking to number four. Some wording I would suggest in exchange is that requests for capital or facility needs will take precedence over those for operating expenses, and I think that's important because one of our tasks up here in distributing these monies is to avoid a permanent expansion of local government. You know, local government's here to do things people can't do for themselves, like build roads, sewer systems, water systems, et cetera, and we shouldn't be, I realize you can't do a hard and fast rule, but the initial intent of that was for capital and facility needs. I will, maybe first I'll entertain any public comment. Seeing none, I want to offer substitute number four as an amendment to the document. That motion dies for lack of a second.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of resolution 07-6392, adopting the proposed agency support policy as written.
Second. I think it's flexible enough to cover the mayor's concerns as written.
I agree.
Motion is to adopt resolution 07-6392, establishing a policy for award of agency contracts. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. That passes four to zero. Joka dissenting.
Item 8.6, resolution number 07-6393, appointing youth members to the Arts and Humanities Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
And those appointments are Katie Blue to the Arts Humanities Commission to succeed Brett Holderman, and Sarah Shire, I believe it's pronounced, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to succeed Ah Young Jeum. So entertain a motion on those?
Mayor, I'd move for approval of resolution 07-6393, appointing youth members to the Arts and Humanities Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion is to approve resolution 07-6393, making set appointments to the Arts and Humanities Commission and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.7, Kenwood Oakdale Park Planning Team Appointments.
Okay, we have 11 names that have been generated by members of the commission, and what we're going to do here, let me first of all pass out one of these to everybody.
Oops, excuse me.
Just in case not everybody's familiar with these people, I'll go ahead and read the names. Dale Martinez, a retired civil structural engineer. James Lambert, manager of community relations for Kansas Gas Services. Tom Gates, an arts, active arts humanities and River Festival volunteer. Julia Crawford, an active community volunteer. Monty Shawwick, local staff person for Congressman Rand, former mayor and city commissioner. Bill Harbin, Harbin Construction. John Reberg, St. Francis Academy Development Officer and former convention tourism employee with the Chamber. Doug Miller, a local electrical contractor. Donnie Morris, local architect, former mayor and city commissioner. Warren Merrill, retired electrical contractor. And Joyce Volk, an active community and downtown volunteer. The way we're going to start this is, we're going to ask all the city commissioners to list a first and second choice among the individuals not personally recommended by themselves. So everybody's on the honor system here, not to vote for their own appointment or their own recommendation, and we'll do that and pass it down to Lou Anne, and then see what we come up with. Sound good?
Mayor, one quick comment. Bill Harbin does not live within the city limits, and I know, I believe he's also on the county's list. Is that correct, Dennis? So I'm not sure if he would need to be included on our list or not.
Okay. Good point. Maybe we should remove him for that reason.
Just take him off. And also for the record, he is no longer with Harbin Construction. He was the former owner of Harbin Construction. He is retired and has sold that company.
Okay. So that'll leave us with 10.
And you want first and second, Joyce?
Everybody pick two, first and second, out of the group that you did not personally recommend. Give it a number, a one and a two.
You want me to just read the number ones first, or both?
Could you tally them real quick for us, or...
Tell me, make a newsie rocks. Pass it out again.
Putting her on the slot, yeah. Hurry, hurry. I wondered why you had so many. Yeah.
While we're waiting, are we going to, is the first meeting of this group already scheduled, or is Dennis going to have a plan for us yet? Okay. I thought I'd mention something while we were having those tabulated. Tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock at Jerry Ivy Park, we will have the annual law enforcement memorial service that honors all the law enforcement officers killed in line of duty, and that's at Jerry Ivy Park, so we hope to see a lot of citizens there. Jack, do you have any announcements for us? No? Okay. No? Okay. Yes.
One suggestion, if I may, that when Luanne is finishing tabulating them, if we could possibly redistribute those so that they can be identified by Commissioner, technically we want to be sure that we don't have anything that might appear at all to be a secret ballot, even though they're obviously public, the sheets. I think we should probably make them identifiable as to each of your selections.
Okay. James Lambert had three second-choice votes. Julia Crawford, one first choice. Monty Shadwick, one first choice, one second choice.
Have I given this a number of...
Total number?
Total number, yeah.
Okay. James Lambert, three. Julia Crawford, one. Monty Shadwick, two. Douglas Miller, one. Donnie Mars, two. Joyce Volk, one.
So James Lambert was the only one that received a majority?
Hmm?
Probably the only one that had a majority.
Mm-hmm.
Had three on the first. And then we had two other individuals with two.
So do we...
May I have a coin to flip here?
Or do we just submit them again?
Commissioners, you could probably choose however you'd like. You could look at the two that are tied, and if there's anything that any Commissioner would like to add regarding that selection, you could have that discussion and then simply vote on that last person if you want to. You could...I suppose you could provide another sheet and go after the second choice again, if you wanted to do that. I think you have adequate sheets of the listing to do that. So there's a couple of options of ways you could go about that.
Who were the two second-place finishers there? Julia Crawford and...
No.
Monty.
Monty.
Monty Shadwick and Donnie Mars.
Okay.
Both former Commissioners.
Mm-hmm. And mayors.
One other way you could look at it is, I'm not sure out of all these, which of the two had the most first priority versus second priority votes. That might, in your mind, make a difference as well.
Donnie's both were first, and then Monty was one and two.
So Monty had three.
No. First choice on Donnie were...both choices...both votes on Donnie were the first choice. Out of the two votes for Monty, one was a first choice and one was a second choice.
So in a sense, Donnie had first choices.
On both.
He was the first picked. Okay. Number one pick.
Got you.
The only thing I might add on that, and Donnie was a choice of mine, I'm just thinking as we keep non-political members out of this, the only thing I would think of is him just having served on the city as acting mayor. If that wouldn't be loosely kind of an extension of the process, in a sense, since the county and city have both agreed to keep members off there, although he's not a member anymore, just very currently a member.
Mm-hmm.
Let me...maybe I wrote this down wrong. Donnie Mars had two ones.
Two Commissioners placed him as their first choice.
And Monty Shadwick had a first and a second?
Right.
And then James Lambert had...
He had three votes. All three were second choices.
Hmm. Well, we have...I don't know what the total makeup of this board is going to be, but it's sometimes popular to say that we need to have both men and women represented. I don't know how it goes overall, but Joyce Volk headed up the recent museum renovations, and it came out ahead, one of the few public-private partnerships to do that. So I kind of...I would kind of favor going with Joyce. Of course, I am the one vote that you saw on the list.
Can we ask what the Volk and the Crawford?
Joyce Volk was a first choice by a Commissioner, and Julia Crawford was a first choice by a Commissioner.
Okay.
A comment on Julia Crawford. When I spoke with Julia, the one hesitation she did have was she was curious about the time commitment. Was very interested in serving, but did have some reservations about the...just how much of a time commitment, if this was going to be a weekly thing, if this was going to be a monthly thing, or just to keep that in mind.
Well, my candidate was James Lambert, and that's why I was a little gray on how to answer him, because he also, too, was curious as to how much time was going to be involved, were the meetings going to be held during the day, were they going to be held in the evenings, once a week, once a month, twice a quarter. So he asked me how this was going to play out. And I had told him that I had assumed we would come down to maybe three or four, and then they would be contacted, because from when I made my initial contact to today has been almost two weeks. It's been about 10 days. And if anything changed along the way, or if certain priorities for them might have changed, maybe some of these that...if we could maybe narrow it to four and ask them if they're still willing to serve, and then have Plan A and Plan B. If the top ones say yes, then we don't have to worry about the following.
Yeah, I think you could do that. You could have your one, two, three, four priorities and then ask that question. Dennis Lawver with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce is here. He might have somewhat of an answer for at least what he anticipates to be the time that would be taken. I would presume from just a pure scheduling perspective that we try to work with the group and meet their schedules the best that we possibly can with a group of this size.
Dennis Lawver from the Salina Chamber of Commerce. I would assume that what we'll do is, after Memorial Day, begin to have the meetings of this group right now and focus on a couple other major projects that need to get done. And in my mind, it'll probably be things by and large done after...prior to Memorial Day. And really, as it relates to the frequency of the meetings and the timing of the meetings, I think that's really going to depend upon the group itself. And I...you know, a first organizational meeting will tell us a lot about what time of day that the group wants to meet, how much homework in between the meetings exists in terms of capacity of the group. So in my mind, I'm going to kind of let that process define itself a little bit. I know I'm not answering your questions very well, because I'm trying to just play facilitator and let's see where this process goes.
Can you tell me when the county Commissioners are going to make their selections?
They discussed...Aaron, did they do that this morning?
They meet tomorrow. But I don't believe so.
Okay, so there are meetings tomorrow.
And it is not on their agenda?
I don't believe so.
So we can...let's see, we can vote right here now, or we can put this off for a week and talk to some of these people again? Is that...
Yeah. I would recommend that if you...
I'm not sure I've given you any new information that's really useful to answering James' question or the question of the individual. Talk to Aaron. It's an unanswerable question, yet we don't know. I would think this whole process may be three to six months long, to have said from the beginning. But beyond that, I'm not sure a week's going to give you more information than you have now.
That's true. And we've never had a committee that typically meets weekly, so I wouldn't expect that anyone would have to be concerned about a weekly meeting. Every other week's a possibility. Certainly, at least once a month, I think is a strong possibility.
Okay, if we take...there were six individuals got votes.
Those on the cheat.
If we were...if we are to talk with these people again this week, do we want to come back and vote, or does everybody want to forward their preferences to me and have me pick two and submit them to you for a vote? Or how do you want to do that, like we do for board appointments?
I'm okay with that, whether it be four or whether it be six. But you're right, these were the six vote-getters. Maybe we should...the county hasn't picked their selections, and we have a little bit of time, so maybe if we were to revisit this, and like I said, maybe some things have changed and some have a priority. But what if we come back in a week and it's still these six? Do we then go to the top two? And we're selecting two, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, two. And there's probably a decent likelihood you're going to have six, I would imagine, because I would presume when someone gave you their name, they anticipated they would have to meet some, and they kind of knew the topic mattered. So unless something really changed, I presume you're going to come back with the same number. That's why it might be good if you could narrow it down further, whether it be four with the priority of one, two, three, four, or just go with two. And if one of those two, or either of the two, isn't interested, you come back and try for two again.
What if we pass the paper again, mark them one, two again, and see what happens?
I would be in favor of doing that. I think we can take care of this.
I'd like to be done with it today.
After some of this discussion, you think that would help?
I think, yeah. Okay, who's...the six that got votes are the ones that are still on the ballot?
Is this from scratch, Commissioner Peck? Do you want to do this from scratch, or are you saying from the top six?
I'm saying from the top six.
Okay. So of the top six.
Okay, do we know... Okay, so the people on the ballot, and you want us to sign our names to save time here?
I think that would be good, yes. Thank you.
So the people still on the ballot are James Lambert, Julia Crawford, Monty Shadwick, Doug Miller, Donnie Mars, and Joyce Volk. Now, so we're voting one, two, and the lowest number of votes are the ones that get it.
Mayor, it depends how you want to do that. If you want to wait, one is a first priority and two is a second, you're going to want to probably wait what are considered to be the first priority votes and look at those separate from the second priority. It may be simpler just to just mark two and see how they tally up as far as the two highest vote-getters.
Now, on this go-around, are we allowed to choose people that we recommended ourselves?
That's up to you. That's totally up to you.
Hoping you can make it simpler for me.
I already marked my paper. Okay.
Me, too.
So I'm asking for help here.
Lucy, you voted for someone you nominated, is that correct?
No, I did not.
You did not?
And I didn't want to go back and change my paper.
Okay.
Okay. So everybody checked two. Does that sound good?
Yes.
They're zooming in the camera on you now.
We're screwing to find an accounting firm to substantiate the votes here validated.
We're picking sides for basketball.
This is a little awkward, oh, because they're all good folks. We should have kept doing it on the Internet back and forth.
Any more staff reports in the meantime here?
How is the water in the basement? How's the water in the Jokas' basement? Did you get over there and get that cleaned up, like a...
It's still there, so...
James Lambert, three. Julia Crawford, one. Monty Shadwick, zero. Doug Miller, zero. Donnie Mars, two. Joyce Volk, four.
So we have Joyce Volk and James Lambert. Are there formal action on that?
You probably should go ahead and take a formal action.
Mayor Joka, I move that we accept James Lambert and Joyce Volk as our two selections for the Kenwood Oakdale Park Planning Team.
Second. Motion is to appoint James Lambert and Joyce Volk to the Kenwood Park Planning Team. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five to zero. Free routine, all in all. Any announcements? I guess we gave plenty of chances for that, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay.